Good evening and welcome to the September 14th Town Council Meeting. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, for announcements I have this evening are upcoming regular meetings. They're all Thursday, September 28th, October 12th, and October 26th, all at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Merrimack Police Department's Open House is back. It will be held on Saturday, October 21st from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Stations tours, station tour, tours, displays and demos will be all during the day. On October 14th, Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the fire station will be holding their open house. They will have displays and live fire demonstrations. Unfortunately, due to the hurricane that is coming up the East Coast, the Merrimack Fire and Police Bases and Bags 2023 softball game that was scheduled for Saturday, September 16th, has been postponed. No date has been confirmed for another game as of today. On October 6th, October 6th is the last day to register voters to change their party affiliations prior to the presidential primary election. Undeclared voters may declare a party at the polls and vote on the primary day. The date of the primary has not yet been set. To check your party affiliations, please visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State's website Also, there's a link on the town of Merrimack's website. Party changes may be completed at Town Clerk's Office during business hours. The supervisors of the checklist will hold a public session to accept new voters and party changes on October 6th at Town Hall from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The next household waste collection is Saturday, October 7th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 25 Crown Street in Nashua. For the cost of $15 per vehicle, Merrimack residents can bring their household hazardous waste. This fee covers up to 10 gallons or 20 pounds of waste. There is an additional charge of $1 per gallon above 10 gallons and 50 cents per pound above 20 pounds. Fees are payable by cash and check only. And finally, Merrimack TV app is here. Download the Merrimack TV app on your app, from your app store on your phone, your iPhone, your iPad, or Android device. Merrimack TV is also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV devices. Merrimack TV app streams all four of our cable channels 24/7 and has hundreds of searchable on-demand content too. And it's real easy. Nicholas sat there with me and watched me download the app to make sure that I have it on my phone. It took about two minutes because of my phone, but it's there. And we were able, and we were able to search and everything else, so it was great. And then the last thing I want to do say is the hazardous waste collection. I went over to Pelham a couple of weeks ago. It is very easy. So if you do have your paints, as long as they're not latex stains, oils, gasolines, they take it all. You don't even have to get out of your car. These guys come up to your car, take the stuff right out, and you're on your way. I was there for like three minutes. So it's very easy and convenient. So if you do have the list of items from our waste transfer station, they have a list of what is accepted at these recycling days. I would strongly recommend you go.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council about upcoming agenda items, you could do so at this table or at the microphone over here. In seeing no one, we'll move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a couple of recognition and a retirement this evening. And the council is going to present a recognition award to Community Development Director Tim Thompson in recognition of his resignation from the Merrimack Community Development Department after more than 12 years of full-time service to the town of Merrimack.
Is that proper attire for Concord? You can go to, okay, just check, just check.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Sure, sure. So Tim came to the town of Merrimack, and he got thrown right in the fire because we were in the process of building some outlet malls. And that was Tim's first forte in the town of Merrimack. Helped us bring the ship through the narrow passageways and get us out on the other end of the outlet malls. And since then, Tim had redeveloped the old Shaw's Plaza to what we call now as 360. He was part of that, brought forward some stuff for the council so that businesses would want to come back to Merrimack. Also had worked diligently with the planning board and zoning boards in the town of Merrimack to kind of make it a little more friendly to come in front of them and work through some of the difficulties that we had with those boards at that time. And then the biggest thing that Tim did was he was our writer for all our correspondence to the state of New Hampshire during our PFOA days. So we would go downstairs and say, "Tim, could you write this for us, please? This is what we want to say." And Tim would write something up, and Eileen would sign it and send it up to the state. So no, Tim did a great job with us, and he'll be sorely missed over the next years. And we wish you the best in Concord. I know that Tim's going back home to Concord to deal, to be Assistant Community Development Director in his hometown of Concord, New Hampshire. And there are losses, there gain, so best of luck to you in the future. And enjoy watching your son run cross-country this year and in the future.
Tim came in around the time we were, the council was desirous to have our different departments be more like they're in a business, a profit-making business. Can't go anywhere else, but we wanted them to feel like they were treated properly. And he was at the beginning of those days where the focus really became strong. But the plaque is on its way, but in the meantime, I'm going to read to you what that plaque will say when you do get it. We'll get it up to you somehow, I'm sure.
We'll have to come back down another time.
Yeah, there you go. So it's presented to Timothy Thompson in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than 12 years to the town of Merrimack as Director of the Community Development Department. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town of Merrimack, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, August 2nd, 2011 to September 8th, 2023, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to say, Tim, our losses, they gain. I want to thank you from the citizens of Merrimack for all the things that you've done for us over those 12 years. And I'm also happy for you because that's really where you want to be instead of a, what? 45-minute drive? It's 10 minutes? Everyone can understand that. And thank you for your wife for letting him come back tonight. So good luck to you. I really mean that. The best.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, Tim, I want to extend my appreciation as well for your work. I've served on the planning board for quite a few years before you came and after as well. And you brought a level of professionalism to Merrimack that we sorely needed. You did a lot of work on things like the master plan and on fixing our planning and zoning and whatnot documents and getting them cleaned up. And just putting the planning board on a straighter keel as far as the dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And so you've done a lot of work for Merrimack, and we really appreciate that. And we will miss you sincerely for the efforts that you put forward for us. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, next is Tom Boland. You want to speak first?
So as you can see, I have a new gentleman sitting behind me, Adam Breden. He's the new finance director. Where are you, Tom? Where are you? So Tom came to the town of Merrimack 10-plus years ago, and I kind of threw him into a project as a consultant with our trustee of trust funds. There was some issues. So I said, "Oh, Tom, it's only going to take about 40 hours. Why don't you come work, take a couple of days, do it, we'll be good." Three weeks later, he comes to me and says, "I'm still not halfway through it." So he untangled a bunch of webs that was with the trustee of trust funds and said, "Okay, now that you untangled these, you're going to stay with that group." So he stayed with the trustee of trust funds, bringing finance to them. In addition, Tom had some pretty small shoes to fill when I became Town Manager. So, and he did a yeoman's job at that. He was my right-hand man for several of those years, eight of his 10 years. And I always could count on him to keep me straight and narrow and make sure that what I was doing was legal and above the, above law and upfront. And I never had to worry about our auditors when they were coming in. They dealt with Tom, and Tom had everything under control. I just hope that in retirement, your golf game gets a little bit better. You know, your handicap comes down a little bit. I didn't want to say that. So, but no, I wish you the best in your retirement. I know that you and your wife Ruth are going to do some traveling and enjoy those grandkids and see a little bit more of them and have some time on the lake and all the good stuff in life. But you are going to be surely missed here. You became a voice of reason in the town. People came to you. We always understood what you were saying. You kept me grounded when I, when we disagreed. We, you talked me through some things, and I appreciate that, Tom, and I appreciate your friendship as well. Wish you the best.
And you as well. Have your plaque coming forward soon, but. So, and this is presented to Thomas W. Boland upon the occasion of your retirement and in recognition of your loyal and dedicated full-time service, which you have contributed for more than 10 years serving as Deputy Director, then Director of the Merrimack Finance Department. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town of Merrimack, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, August 26th, 2013 to September 15th, 2023, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager.
The only one thing I, unlike Tim, see, Tim's not retiring. He's just going to a different job. Tom, you are retiring. That's a whole different ballgame. The only thing I wish for you is help for you and your wife so you can enjoy the many years of retirement that you have ahead of you. Take care of yourself.
All right. I had meant to introduce our new finance manager, and I failed to do so. So I'm glad Paul did that for me. Okay, we have no appointments and no public hearings? Oh, wait a minute, Mackenzie, yes. I forgot to let you know that Mackenzie's been excused for this evening. And we're moving item number three under a new business low-power FM discussion. We're going to move that forward without objection. And that's the Media Service Coordinator Nicholas Lavalley seeking the Town Council approval to apply for a transfer of low-power FM frequency from another community.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. Low-power FM, I'll just give you a brief description of what a low-power FM station is. A low-power FM station, they're available to non-commercial, educational, and public safety entities, not available to individuals or commercial operations. They became available by the FCC in January of 2000. Neighboring communities like Manchester and Bedford in particular have been operating their FM radio stations for years through their community media divisions expressly with public safety in mind. Both stations fill 168 hours of programming with music, community-minded shows, and meeting coverage, live sports, and other events. The Media Division, Merrimack's Media Division, has listed low-power FM on our CIP for several years since 2011. But each year, it's taken a lower priority due to the unavailability to apply for a frequency from the FCC, which is the first step in the process. The FCC has essentially made these, this application window available once every 10-ish years, and they kind of do it with not much notice or fanfare. Suddenly, the application window exists, and you have a limited time to apply. So it's never really fallen within the right time or space with our budgeting process. There's no cost to apply for a transfer or relocation of a low-power FM frequency. The potential to bring low-power FM to Merrimack actually arrived this summer, so at the beginning of this budget cycle. In June, the FCC announced its filing period to apply for a frequency would be open the first week of November. In August, we met with the Londonderry School District as they're considering liquidating their radio station's equipment and are open to transferring their frequency to another community. They presently operate 102.9 FM, WLOO in Londonderry. Harry Kozowski is a radio veteran of 45 years. He's currently the Program Director at Bedford TV's radio station. He has provided in-kind guidance throughout the past few weeks. Harry has kind of held our hand in this process of kind of getting to understand the process and also what the infrastructure entails, basically detailing the equipment and that infrastructure, what's required for this process to happen. In that, the Londonderry transfer is the better of these two opportunities as it's non-competitive, whereas to apply for another signal would be. And there's only one other signal available in this area, and it's not as great as this one that we could kind of inherit from Londonderry. I personally feel that bringing low-power FM to residents is an opportunity to expand the Media Division's resources. Both the police and fire chief have vocalized their support as an expansion of public safety as they're familiar with how it's used in the need of an emergency. If low-power FM is a resource that the Town Council wishes to add to the Media Division, I'm happy to provide a bit more detail, associated costs, answer any questions. If not, I'm happy to continue the Media Division's focus on our, building our community engagement and informing residents through our cable channels, our website, and our new dedicated streaming app that the Town Manager talked about at the beginning of the meeting. This is not, obviously not a decision for me as the town's Media Services Coordinator to make. I can go on and on about how great, in particular WMNH is in Manchester or how WBNH is in Bedford. Their programming is wonderful. I particularly enjoy how they inform residents and how it's just a different medium than cable or streaming altogether. I can go on and on about that. But this is not my decision to make. You're the Town Council. If we were to apply for this frequency, it would be this governing body's name and the Town Manager's name on the application. This also would be an impact on my division and our staff. We're three full-time employees with some on-call hours from part-time employees. But I would be remiss not to bring this opportunity forward to the Town Council as it's been on our radar, no pun intended, for, you know, over 10 years. And I'm kind of putting, I'm putting the ball in your court. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So when Nick brought this to me about a month, month and a half ago, I told him, "Go do some more homework, do some more research." We were just in the infantile stages of working with Londonderry and seeing what they had. This Londonderry opportunity is a great opportunity because they cannot sell the license. It has to be transferred. So you cannot sell an FCC license to another organization. You have to transfer it. So we'd be picking up this license for zero cost of that. However, there would be some cost to buy some equipment. Londonderry has some equipment that they'd be willing to sell. I won't say bargain basement prices, but a lot less than if we were to start this from scratch. The other thing that we talked about is infrastructure. What do we need? We have a tower right here sitting at Town Hall. All we'd have to do is put an antenna on it. We have other locations in town that have police radio towers, and MVD has the wells where if we had to, we could put towers on there to boost our signal strength.
In particular, that the MVD tower, excuse me, the, there is a vacant police tower at an MVD site that I visited today with Ron Minor from the MVD and took a look at it and spoke to Harry, and that tower would be provided, or it can be power moved to and a couple other things, but the tower itself could be used for this.
Could be used. So there's no infrastructure of building new towers, is the point there. The final piece that was for me was using this for public safety if something happens, to go out and say, "The warming center is here. The cooling center is here. For flood information, go there. In case we need it, it's just another avenue for us to go out there because if people's cell phones are dying, or if people's TVs are out, or the power is out, they would have, call me old-school, but I remember my father, when every time we used to get a snowstorm, fill the bathtub and get to make sure the batteries in the radio work. People have radios. They could tune into our frequency and figure, find out where safety is or what's happening for information. The other thing is, is that it brings the council to another platform. You'll be on radio now too. We got hair and makeup. Now we'll have radio personalities. No.
It's all going good.
But no, it just puts it out there in another form for people, for people to use. And really, the big, the big selling factor, and then we did have a meeting today, and both the police and fire chief both spoke up and said, "For emergency purposes, we're 100% behind this. This is a great idea to have it." I know it's something that Nick has had on his thing. The other thing is, you need three license agreements to run the radio station. We already paid for two. So the third one is like $200 more a year. So it's not a big cost or a big ass to do that. And finally, the last piece was, I said, "Nick, if you're going to do this, you're going to have to absorb it in your budget." And Nick's like, "Paul, I already have the equipment budgeted for, and the recurring costs are between 2, around $2,000, and I can absorb that in my budget." So it's there. The cost of the equipment is less than $10,000 to get fully outfitted, at least to start with an antenna.
To start, to start with, to start with coverage that's essentially Merrimack's defined town center. And then what I would be proposing next year is, in our submitted CIP, to expand that coverage to townwide, which would be next year.
But it all, all the chips are lining up. And when Nick came back to me after this one, it's there. So he's here to answer any questions because I know when you talk about low-power FM, people are like, "What does that mean?" He's here to answer all those questions.
You mentioned staffing. What's the impact of staffing?
There's three full-time employees in the Media Division now, including myself. And then we have part-time on-call hours as well. I think the Media Division stands to grow no matter what, whether it's the amount of meetings that we're covering or specifically the more original content we produce. We've just evolved quite a bit over the past couple of years. I don't necessarily expect to come before the council and ask to hire a new part-time employee anytime in the, in the near future. But I do recognize that we seem to be kind of an evolving department as well. There are, at Bedford, there are three full-time employees, a number of part-time on-call employees, and there is a part-time radio programmer that came along shortly after their radio station was constructed and, and there. So this would impact staff. Would I expect to come before the council as soon as next year and ask for additional staffing? I don't think so. I think we'd have to see what the demand with the radio station is. I think to get the program up and running, you know, I don't think it would, I think it would impact staff. There would be more work to do. I also think that, but I also think that because it's, we're community TV and because we're already creating content, a number of this content could translate to radio. Not all of it, but some. We certainly would have our live varsity games simulcast on cable as we would on radio. Bedford does that. Manchester has done it in the past. We'd also share, you know, away games with communities. So, you know, a town like Nashua, who's on our border here, we could take Nashua and Merrimack games and share their feed. So we're already, when we're already doing those things over cable, some of those things that we're doing over cable, we'd also be putting on radio. But in terms of, you know, producing original content and things like that, that would be up for staff or programming the music. That would be our current staff that would be doing that. So there would be an impact, but also you think about, you know, the other times that this Media Division has taken on more work, and we've always risen to the occasion. The three of us believe in community media. We now have, I've had 19-plus years in community media. It's something we care about, so we'd be up for this challenge, for sure.
Do we know why Londonderry is, has decided to move away from their?
I certainly do. There is one person at Londonderry that's in charge of their education channel. It's one person doing almost everything for the school district on the media side. Their radio station was kind of a labor of love, passion project from a video teacher who is no longer with the district. I also think that there's, at the time of its inception, was a, there was a school board member who was also involved. But now that they've had it for, I think, over 10 years, you know, that one person at the school district is sort of ta, kind of taxed from covering their varsity sports and a number of other things, and they, he just doesn't have the hours to fulfill the radio station. But it is on the air. It is on the air. He does program it with music and a number of other things. So I was listening to it tonight.
And then do we know what the decision process is for where Londonderry's license goes? I mean, is, are we the only one in the queue? Is there potentially it goes somewhere else? Who makes that decision?
So Londonderry knows that we were interested. Again, because it's appeared on my CIP, then, and it's been something that we've talked about in the past, that I've presented to the council in the past. I thought it was all right for me to kind of go ahead and have that meeting with Londonderry and meet with the superintendent and their IT and my counterpart at the school district. They, you know, they do want to liquidate their equipment. And then also, you know, if this was a commercial frequency, it would be different. They could sell that commercial frequency, I think. I think so. But they, they definitely can't sell this frequency to anyone. They know that we're interested, so we're sort of first in line.
And Nick, you tell me that it has come west?
That's, that's right. Thanks, Paul. So that frequency, there would be one frequency avail, in theory, there'd be one frequency available from when the FCC opens this application process. And that frequency is not really ideal because of where it sits comparatively to other radio stations that currently exist. And that was explained to me by, by Harry, this radio veteran who we've been working with. But the Londonderry frequency, it can only move west. It can't move north, south, or east. It has to move west. Merrimack is obviously west of Londonderry. So it's kind of serendipitous that this has happened. It's also serendipitous that there's a tower right outside of Town Hall that's, that's no longer used by the police department. And then additionally, meeting with Ron Minor today and going to visit the tower at MVD, again, an abandoned, for lack of better terms, police tower at the, at that site, I was told that we should be able to bring power to it. There's a conduit from their substation. Obviously, we'd have to get approval from the MVD board for that. And then also, if we need cell service, cellular or internet service to the tower, the Verizon Tower is right 70 feet parallel to that tower. So I feel like it's serendipitous that these things have all sort of fallen in line. And, and the fact that it can only move west as well, especially.
Thank you, Nick. Nancy?
Thank you. Actually, I had the same question about, that Andy asked, about why Londonderry was transferring. But my second question would be, you said that Londonderry, they can't sell it. They could just transfer it. So if we, it's trans- You said that London Dairy, they can't sell it. They could just transfer it. So if we, it it's transferred to us. What happens if if there comes a point in time where we decide, for whatever reason, that we no longer want to do it? What happens? What if you just have to have somebody willing to transfer to or?
I believe you can just simply relinquish it back to the FCC.
Or dead air?
Or yeah, it's, I mean, to have it. If you obtain the license, there's a certain number of cri- there's criteria that you do have to meet. I don't have that off the top of my head, but there, once you do have the frequency and you've established this, you, there is a criteria that you do have to meet in terms of. Programming hours and 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 how many hours you're filling. Otherwise, you could lose the license, but I I think you could just relinquish the license.
And they would reassign it.
And they'd reassign it, or it would come around the next application window.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, so basically, you're saying there's, there's little cost to get it and not a whole lot of anticipated cost to keep it running. And and no cost if we decide we don't want to do anything with it.
Correct.
And and then theoretically, you could just transfer it to somebody else if if we flat decided it was useless.
Correct. Um, there would be, like Paul mentioned, there's um upwards to around, up to $10,000 for costs. That would be incurred in this year's budget that that we have money budgeted for. And then um next year's cost would be upwards to $30,000. At least that's what's in that I've earmarked in our C I P. That's been submitted, that's specifically for low-power FM. And then moving forward, um between licensing and any sort of maintenance, we project between $2,000 and $5,000 a year for reoccurring.
Maintenance of of transmitters and antennas and stuff like that?
Exactly, exactly.
Thirty thousand is to expand the coverage over more of Merrimack?
Exactly.
Because that sounds like a lot bigger number than we'd been talking about before.
We were talking before about the initial $10,000 and then what I've submitted in this coming year's C I P is $30,000.
But this would all still be in the media budget, which is not part of our tax base.
Correct, funded through franchise fees.
Yeah, I I guess I don't personally see a great use for it. I mean, I understand police and fire think that it would be great for emergencies. I don't know that I have a functional FM radio in my house. If it's not attached to my cellphone or something like that, so. I I'm not opposed to it at all. I just, I I'm not sure I totally see the value or the value add of it. But if it's not going to take a ton of your, your staff's time and it's going to be an enhancement to the media division offering in general. Um, I'd be willing to support it. Great, thank you.
I I did want to note too that, you know, we haven't had a ton of public asking for this, but we have had public asking for this. Um, two years ago, I received an email from a gentleman. He lives in town and he mentioned he was interested in low-power FM. And I sent him a message back and talked about how much I love Manchester's low-power FM and and then um. You know, as this was kind of happening or uh at the beginning of the summer, we kind of got wind of it or there was rumblings that they may open the window in the fall and. Gentleman introduced himself to me at one of the concerts that we were covering, the spring concert at high school, and he was all excited and said, I I heard the the FCC may be opening that window. And and he was the gentleman who who reached out to me a couple of years ago. And he's kind of just kept up with Merrimack TV and all the enhancements we've made over the past couple of years. So. Um, like, like Tom just said, I I do see it as an enhancement. Um, if this council didn't see a true that, you know, didn't see total value in this or true value. Um, you know, I I I have an exceptional staff. I'm so grateful to have the staff that I've had over the decade plus that I've been here. Um, and, you know, I like to say, like, we always, we always have risen to the occasion of of showing the value in what we have um with our resources.
Thank you, Nick. Any further questions, comments? It was the pleasure of the council.
We need, I I move to approve the uh. Move to approve applying for the transfer of the London Dairy license. Spending funds from the media budget business.
Um, thank you. I move to to approve the application of the transfer of the low-power FM frequency from another community to Merrimack.
And authorize up to $10,000.
Up to $10,000?
Yeah.
Uh, for the purchase and acquisition of equipment to uh get it started.
Yeah.
Second.
Authorize the town manager to sign any documents necessary.
Right, a motion by Tom, second by Barbara. Any further discussion on your motion?
Just a comment, I think, I'm sort of six and one half dozen another, but I really do think I want an error on the side of providing. An avenue in case that the town needs it for a crisis. And hopefully we'll never have to use it, but knowing, and I think if we do this, we really have to advertise it and make it well-known. For it to be useful. I mean, if I'm saying I want to be able to have it for safety purposes. And that's my rationale for wanting to approve it, then I think we need an obligation along with that. Uh, to make sure that the citizens of the town know that's there for that reason. So that they know if something happens, at least there's a resource beyond itself. And you're right, whether they have a radio or not, but that's a whole different.
I I'd urge um the council to visit uh W B N H Bedford Radio's uh social media presence or their website or listen at 105 dot one FM. Um, their tag is Public Safety Radio. And obviously, if you turn it on, you're not just listening to uh emergency announcements, but you're listening to great music. You're listening, you're listening to great music twenty-four seven. You're listening to varsity sports coverage. You're listening to other community-oriented programming. Um, and that way, you know it's there.
Can you define great music?
I'll tell you, I will, I know the answer to that. I I I know the answer to that and it's safe. Great music is the music that you don't hear while the tomahawks are warming up on Friday nights.
Maybe we could say like Tuesday is country.
If anyone's been to the football games, and some of that music, I I do like plenty of it, to be honest with you, but great music is is not that.
Is it is great music what you run with the with the scroll on our community TV channels?
Oh, yeah, no.
That's new Zach. That's different. But when you have, that's free.
Maybe we should start with that.
But when you have, um, when you have an ASCAP BMI license, CSAC license, when you have these licensed through uh uh, you know, from a music publishing, you you're you're more or less limitless. Um, and the cost isn't, isn't much, so.
Very good.
So we'll have some debates about what defines.
Absolutely.
Barbara, that's you have to define your own children if you're gonna do that. It's a Nancy Arrington radio show.
My next life.
That's. You know, I see this as being something that follows up with Nixel and will be particularly important. With um when, you know, Everett Turnpike work gets closer and closer to Merrimack and it's just like getting there real quick. Um, because the Nixel only gives you so much information and this way, you know, people can. If you still know how to reprogram your FM radio, you can have it saved and just instead trying to read your phone to see what the Nixel is coming through. You just, you know, pop it over to the radio station and get the details. So I I see, I see a combination of um uses for this and I would use it because. I don't like to listen to a lot of the music on the radio, so.
All right, very good. There's no further discussion? Okay, I'll like to call the question and the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining, um, six zero zero. Thanks Nicholas.
Thank you.
I did download your app, by the way. Great, and yeah, I would like to urge those watching at home, download Merrimack TV. It's across everywhere and I'm so happy that we can just say now, download Merrimack TV. It's on every device, so.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Nick.
Um, Mr. Lee, it had been suggested to me that maybe you wanted to speak on one of our future agenda items. If you're just here to hear it, then I'm sorry to have bothered you, but if you wanted to speak, I was gonna, we don't have that opportunity during the agenda item.
I I understand that.
Okay.
Public hearing. Here in case, as you hear what's going on.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Sorry to bother you. All right, next on the agenda, legislative updates. Did Nancy?
Sure, thank you. Um, I just a short sort of update. Uh, this week is the week that um those of us in the House. File um legislative service requests for any potential bills that we would like to to um to sponsor this year. Um, tomorrow at four o'clock is the deadline. Um, I know, I just looked, actually, it was a hundred and twenty yesterday and there's three hundred and thirty-six right now. Um, I I put three in before, but I think I have four more that are going in tomorrow. Um, just a quick update, two of the uh the bills that I I've submitted are commission bills. One is the uh our PFAS, our state's PFAS commission. The timing will be up and clearly with all of the things happening um i- in New Hampshire, but especially in our southern New Hampshire uh community. That um there's a lot of work to do and I know D E S is in support that we certainly need to to re-up. So I um I wrote a bill that will. Re- re-establish the PFAS commission. Um, also wrote a bill and submitted it that will re-establish the Commission on Environmentally Triggered Chronic Illness. Which is runs very parallel to a lot of our work in the PFAS commission. It really just follows the um. The public health impacts of all kinds of environmental um uh triggers and contaminants in this in the state. And the other one that I that I um submitted really is relative to the PFAS remediation loan fund. Um, I think back to the days when PFAS, we were just learning about it and we needed money for testing and we needed, there was no money. Um, to um available, so we used um at the time, there was the the M B T E um uh fund. And there was testing for that and they tested for PFAS at the same time, so we were able to use that fund, those funds. Um, but um one of the the bill that I've written will basically require that if we have any um. Uh, the proceeds, fa- final proceeds from lawsuits and settlements will go into not the general fund, because then they can disappear. But they will be specific to PFAS remediation and and stuff. So I'm working with a couple of attorneys up around that. It's not, I mean, the bill is in, but. It there will be amendments. Uh, I just thought it was important to um keep the money where we know we're gonna need it, because not only here, but. As we've seen from the last testing by D E S, wells all over the state are testing, um, you know, above M C L, so. Um, that's it. And I'll update um at at our next meeting about the other, the additional bills. So thank you.
Just one for you tonight. Um, last two Thursday was the last day the transfer station had extended hours. Um, until next spring, normal business hours are eight to four at the transfer station Tuesday through Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Consent agenda, item one under Old Business, um, the town uh council discussed the request of an additional high school representative member position on the Merrimack Conservation Commission. And we'd ask Paul to take a look into that and.
So I I did some research. Um, basically, the Conservation Commission was established March third, nineteen sixty-seven by town meeting. Pursuant to RSA thirty-six dash A. And then reaffirmed when uh the charter was approved in two thousand and seven. Um, by doing that, the charter article read Conservation Commission, there shall have, there shall be a Conservation Commission consisting of seven members. Six of these members to be appointed by town council for terms of three years, such terms staggered. One town council member shall be appointed annually to serve as an ex officio. Uh, there shall also be three alternate members appointed for the same manner of regularly appointed members. Except no more than one alternate appointed to the term shall expire in a single year. The town council shall fill vacancies for the period of an expired term. The Conservation Commission shall have all the powers granted to the Conservation Commission by New Hampshire state law. Um, and then doing some more research, thirty-six A colon three reads, by state law, the con- con-con commission. Membership is capped at seven members. That's by state law. You can't go to eight, can't go to ten. It's seven members across the board. So looking at that, I went back to the Conservation Commission. I gave them two options. I said, option number one is um you call the high school position a student representative instead of a member. This way, the Conservation Commission could continue to have seven voting members plus a student rep. The language would read, seven members, six of these members shall be appointed by town council with terms of three years, and it goes on to follow it. The one change would be one student representative would be recommended by the school board and appointed by the town council. This individual is a not, is not a voting member nor a member of the quorum for quorum purposes. Which that does is that he's just a representative. It's kind of like what the school board does with their member. Um, uh, they have a a student rep. That would be the similar. Uh, or option two was to make this uh an official voting member. Um, Conservation came back and voted on Monday. Were you at the meeting, Andy? I'm sorry, um, to put you on the spot, but they voted for option number one, which was. To make it a student representative position. Um, all I would need from the council is to reaffirm that, affirm that decision that was made by the Conservation. Uh, so I could start working on preparing this charter change, because it will be a charter change to add that new language that I spoke about.
I I like that option. So, um, Andy, did you?
Yeah, it it was unanimous by the Conservation Commission. Everybody wanted option one.
Yeah, very good.
I'd like to make a motion to reform the decision made by the Conservation Mission related to the student representative. Do I need to say more than that or?
No, and town manager to begin the process for a charter change.
As well, yes.
Second.
By Nancy, second by Nancy Murphy.
That's right. It is a charter change. Yes, I had forgotten. You're right.
Right, Barbara?
What's the length of the term again?
It's one year.
One year?
Did you have that in there?
Usually they are.
Yeah, I didn't put in for one year. It's it's up to the board, the s- the school board to reappoint.
Yeah, we we discussed one-year term. Potentially, you get that student rep for nine months, which is another reason why we didn't want that individual to be part of the quorum. Because in the summertime, you potentially may not get that individual.
Right, right.
For one year.
Okay, yep.
I would do the year because it is in the charter. That would be important.
No, I agree.
I could put that in there.
Right, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question and the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining, six zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Item one under New Business, the uh managers are going to provide an update to the council on the Heritage Commission membership requirements. Uh, it's a request we made during the town town council retreat work session.
Correct. Um, a lot of research.
In uh, in two thousand, in two thousand, Article twenty-six, the town voted to establish a heritage commission. And uh in two thousand, uh same art, in two thousand, Article twenty-seven gave them up to $500. Um, in reading this, then I looked at, could the Heritage Commission be disbanded because of membership? Um, and I talked to our town attorneys and they said that uh. It could be deactivated. However, it's in the charter. So once again, we'd have to do a charter change if if that's the way we wanted to go. Um, and then looking into it more, um, I found something that we haven't been doing. So since the charter in two thousand and seven, we have never done this. Uh, the charter basically says that the town council appoints three members, full term. One ex officio from town council, one ex officio from the planning board. We have never asked the planning board for a member, ever. So. Yeah.
Oops. Yeah, we're all looking at Tom.
So in doing research, we we figured that we have two members already appointed. That have their terms. We have our town council representative, ex officio. We'd have to ask the planning board for theirs. They would have a quorum for their meetings. We also have a citizen who did come forward. He's just checking if the meetings could be changed because of his schedule. Because he has commitments on Monday nights. Um, but he he's willing to deal with, to be part of this commission committee. So looking at all this stuff, what we really don't have for this committee is alternates. So we'd have to get alternates. Um, interested in in the heritage and bring alternates in. Um. However, in doing more research and looking at the bylaws, the bylaws have never been changed for the Heritage Commission. Still says selectmen. It doesn't talk about the change in membership, so. So we'd have to update the bylaws as well to make the bylaws current. So I am here tonight to see if the town council wants to continue with the Heritage Commission. And if they do, we will ask the planning board at their next meeting to recommend an ex officio member for the Heritage Commission. We'll work on changing the language in the bylaws to change anything that says selectmen to town council. To, needs to say five members, needs to read three members and then one for, uh, town counselor and one planning board member. We'd have to change that in the bylaws as well. Um, and then put in our, the RSA, which is the requirements. Because heritage also is RSA six seventy-three colon four, small a, RSA six seventy-three colon five. Talks about membership with heritage commissions as well. So we, we need to make those changes. So the first question is, is the council in favor of continuing the Heritage Commission or disbanding it? That's a loaded question, I know.
So have you spoken with the co-chairs for heritage regarding this question?
The co-chairs are trying to get meetings, but they can't because they can, they can't get a quorum together because of not having enough membership.
Oh, I know.
But with having the two ex officio members, one planning board, one town counselor, it'd make it easier to get the quorum, because then you'd only need three fifths. With, instead of trying to get three out of three, you have two plus two right now. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely. Um, because I, being on both planning board and heritage, I've been kind of fulfilling that role, because that whole thing about the graveyards that you know about. Um, you know, I, I was able to work with both units or both teams to say, you know, how can we make sure that this particular issue doesn't slip through the cracks? Um, so I think it's a good idea. I would just leave it, so the planning board would need to appoint, correct?
Correct.
And not double dip like with you.
Well, it would add a, a di- and.
Correct.
An additional voice.
Correct.
In addition to mine.
Well.
On both boards.
I, that's what I wanna.
Yeah, it can't be me.
That's what I wanna clarify, because you are a member of the town council.
Right.
And also the planning board.
Right.
So they could say, well, you could cover both of them.
Yeah, no.
But that doesn't help. The premise.
No, and if that was the case, if Barrow, because she's ex officio to the planning board as a town council rep, if they said, well, we wanna appoint you as our rep, then the town council could say, we need to appoint somebody else at that point. But it'd be best if a planning board member, and it can be an alternate too. It doesn't have to be a full-term member. It could be an alternate on the planning board as the appointed member to, to the board. And we will make those points when we, if, it sounds to me like you do not want to disband. So we will make those points when we move forward and ask for a person.
I'd like to try and save it. I'd like to try, I don't know if it's, it would work though. What do you guys think?
I think we can, honestly, I think. Give, give me some time. Let me go to the senior center. Let me go to a senior meeting on Monday. I'll ask if I can take five minutes off. I can ask somebody over there if they would be interested in becoming an alternate to the Heritage Commission. And, and if, if it's, if that's what the council wants to try to save it, to try to get some alternates up on that. A lot of, um, a lot of previous years, it was double duty between the Historical Society and the Heritage.
Yes, yes. I was gonna say.
But historical is, is separate from the town.
But at the same time, I'm sure there's a lot of overlapping. So why don't, you can be on both, right?
You can be on both, so.
So it's not.
Let, let me talk to the Historical Society, see if they want, become alter- alternate members. And let me see if I can get a couple more alternates. I really hope that the gentleman that you interviewed last week would, uh, be able to do it if they can change the day of the meeting. Um, uh, you know.
Yeah, look.
Yeah.
Have those conversations.
So, all right, so I, I.
Game for that.
All right, so I.
You guys think the same.
Tom, I didn't, I saw Tom's look, I didn't know if you had. Oh, okay.
All right, I, I am more than happy.
What's your opinion, sir?
I'm more than happy to do that. The one thing that I would have to say is that, um, we definitely need to change their bylaws. Anyway, anyways, if we're gonna save it, we definitely need to come back and, and change their bylaws. And I think I have it here that we could do the motion in my memo that talks about what we would need to change on their bylaws. Um, and that's appointment of members and alternates.
Are you comfortable with that direction?
I'm comfortable with the direction. If the council wants to make the motion, though, to change the bylaws.
Okay.
Tonight, that'd be great too.
We can go ahead and do that.
Is that something the town coun-? Is that something the town council changes, the bylaws for the Heritage Commission, or do they?
They should do, change that.
They bring it forward to you. So I, I can, I could suggest that to them.
Do that.
Forward.
That can be part of your spiel.
Okay.
So you need to vote for that?
Nope, I will bring it back to them and have them bring it forward.
There you go.
Okay.
Your recommendations.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda, under new business number two. Uh, council considered appointing the following individuals to town committees pursuant to Charter Article Four, Section Eight. Uh, Danielle Malanson was, uh, interviewed for the Conservation Commission as an alternate member, alternate member, and Mark Williams, uh, was, uh, interviewed for the planning board alternate position. And, uh, we did that this past month. I can't remember what day it was.
What was that last week?
The third day. Yes, it was just last week.
How quickly we forget.
Oh, gosh. Uh, it's not a good sign. So, uh, um, it was, uh, two new individuals, so we're very happy about that. And, um, Danielle, uh, wasn't able to be interviewed. We did our first Zoom interview, I think it was the first at this moment. And, um, and she's pretty happy, so she isn't here this evening, but Mark is. And, um, so, uh, if, I don't know if, um, somebody would have any further discussion or questions?
Well, it looks like you guys all recommended it.
Yep, yes. So, um.
Do you wanna do it together?
Do it together.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Danielle Malanson as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission and Mark Williams as an alternate member to the planning board.
Second.
And it's clear, I mean, yes, the recommendations, and they were both great.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion, call a question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, uh, six zero zero. And, um, so.
Is it Mark?
Yep. Yes, oh, gosh. And Mark, if you can join me right over here.
He needs to swear at you, I mean, swear you.
Raise your right hand and, um, and, um, you could just, if you'd like to just read through this, that'd be great. Just, yeah, read it out loud and. I got that. Where is there's a vacancy in, in the office of planning?
No, just, just the old.
Hey, you're the one.
I'm sorry. I did, I pointed.
Right before you told me to do that.
My apologies, that, this is it.
Makes a lot more sense. I, Mark Williams, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge formal duties incumbent on me as an alternate member of the Merrimack Planning Board. According to the best of my abilities, agreeable to rules and regulations with this constitution of laws, the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Yes, sir.
Follow orders, I like, yeah.
You already take. Did you take the other one, but you?
We're signing, but.
Both of them went down?
Mm-hmm.
What do you do with the other one?
We're, we're signing Danielle.
We're signing Danielle's.
Oh, you have Danielle's down there already?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, item number four under new business, the council to hold a first reading of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to repeal Section two dot two, zero-two dot four dot D. Mixed-use developments permitted in the I-one district by conditional use permit. And the, and the correction of section's numbers in the remainder of Section two point zero-two point four pursuant to Charter Article Five. Yes, Nancy.
I'd like, I'd like to make a statement before we start deliberating on this. Because of my past expressed concerns about the development of the premium low parcel, it has been implied that I cannot be impartial about consideration of this ordinance. Although this ordinance action would not impact any plans already approved for this parcel, I will re, uh, I will recuse myself from deliberation in order to ensure that any discussion, deliberation or votes are perceived as not being tainted by my involvement. Okay, so I'm just gonna sit in the, in the, um, audience. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Nancy. Paul, did you wanna, uh?
Yeah, um, Robert, you wanna come on up? Robert, Robert Price, um, is here. We should've had Tim talk about this before he left. Basically, what, what we're looking to do is we're looking to repeal the entire section that talks about mixed-use developments printed in the I-one district by a conditional use permit. And, and like you said, that, uh, we're looking to repeal that, all the language and take another deeper look at it when we do do our master plan, which is coming up in the next, um, year. Um, and really what we're looking at is that, and I wanna read this statement as well. All previously approved mixed-use conditional use permits, the CUPs, that existed at the time of the session, this section being repealed, shall be subject to the requirements of the former section two point zero-two point four point D and existing in the zoning ordinance revised as of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any proposed modifications or amendments to these previously approved CUPs shall be required to compile with requirements under the zoning district they are located within and/or with the provision of Section Nine non-conforming uses. So if somebody's already got a CUP on one of these properties, they are allowed to continue to move forward in the process. If they wanna change their CUP or amend it, then it would fall underneath this. Repeal.
Right.
Uh, and then, of course, there was an error in, you know, D E F G, the lettering, so we, we'd fix that at the same time. Um, but that's, that's in a nutshell. It went, uh, the town council voted on this, approved it to go to the planning board for their public hearing and notification. They did review it and, uh, they, uh, they voted not to recommend this to the town council. A five-zero-zero vote not to recommend the town council to repeal.
Because they wanted to have input into what the wording would be moving forward.
Yeah.
And didn't have that opportunity, so they were opposed to it.
They were opposed to it. However, by repealing it, if the council wants to move forward, the motion would be to move this section to a public hearing.
Yes. All right, yeah, I, um, I, I felt the way the CUP process was going wasn't necessarily what was in the best interest of the community, which is why I'm in support of, uh, moving this on to allow the, uh, the master plan committee, when it's put together, to take, to look into this. I think there's better opportunities, uh, available to the town and, and that's, that's where I am on the position of it. Uh, but I didn't know if you had anything, uh, I didn't.
Um, I just want to clarify that because this is an action of the town council. Uh, and after consultation with legal, I have been recusing myself from these discussions at the planning board. But I will add, from this standpoint, um, just so that people wonder why, you know, what, what is behind this? I have received several emails and I think others have as well regarding, um, some of the issues going on with the constant building in the town and the fact that no matter what gets approved, that doesn't seem to be what's being built. So, uh, this is also generated, this action is also generated by the citizens of Merrimack as well.
Tom?
So let me just add that I was on the planning board when this went into effect and I heard many different CUP presentations. And as Barbara just alluded, none of them have come in the way they were presented, at least initially. And in fact, they didn't come in the way they were approved initially and they're constantly being changed and modified. Um, and so my feeling behind this is that it gives us a chance to step back from the whole process and review it to, uh, and, and as it was presented to me, there were two options. We could either spend a lot of money right now and revise this, review it and revise it over the next year or so. Um, and then turn around and do the master plan. Or we could cut this off here and say, let's just take a breather for a year and a half. Get into the ten-year master plan and revise it and bring it forward in one swell poop to, to go through the whole thing, uh, with all of our surrounding communities in mind and things of that nature, rather than spending and dedicating a fair amount of time and resources, uh, and money to, to update the plan as it is right now. Because I'm frustrated personally, and I know I've talked to a lot of people, as Barbara alluded to as well, that are frustrated that the programs that are coming into the town are modifying themselves substantially from what they, uh, presented and, you know, and when they present themselves with a glowing program and everybody gets excited about it, and then it's referred to by some as crab boiling, where you slowly change it so that nobody gets real excited until you realize when you look at it two, three years later, it's not the same thing at all. And it's not what I would've approved if you had told me that back then. Um, but, you know, crabs will, will allow you to boil them to death if you just heat the water slowly. And these programs are modified slowly and carefully and they're, they're changed from what they were. So I, I think we need to, to step back and take a look, see where the community really wants to be and what we should be doing. And that's why I'm supporting this effort to just kinda say, let's take a backseat for a minute and, and figure out what this really should be, rather than trying to rush through, spend a lot of money, spend a lot of time and energy, uh, trying to rush through an enhancement and then have to go through the whole process anyway when the ten-year plan comes up in a year or so. In fact, I probably oughta be in process right now. So, uh, that's, that's my feelings behind it. So I'm in support of this ordinance change.
Um, I was gonna have Robert's, uh, I should've come to you first, probably, Robert, but, uh, I may have Andy and then, uh, I'd like you to speak about the, the processes we move forward, the master plan timeframes and such. But Andy?
And I agree with Tom. You know, I, I think the original intent of this was to create some mixed-use areas in town where you have residential within walking distance of, you know, some commercial places that they could go visit, whether. within walking distance of, you know, some commercial places that they could go visit, whether it be restaurants or entertainment or, or whatever it is. When the planning board was here previously to give their annual report, I brought this up at the time. And the, the comment that I made was, you know, it's deafening from the town to hear that the town is, is tired of seeing all of the apartments. And so when I brought that up, the response I got was, well, you know, according to the ordinance, you know, if someone wants to build an apartment and a storage facility, that, that meets the intent, and there's not a lot we can do about it. Right then and there, from that response, I knew that this part of the ordinance was not meeting the original intent. And so for that reason alone, i- is why I support doing this. I also don't support rushing into it. As Tom said, you know, we could rush into this, spend a bunch of taxpayer money, and then we're gonna turn around and spend a bunch of taxpayer money again to do the master plan. That was one of the things that I heard out of the, the, the planning board as they reviewed this, that, you know, the town council was throwing the, the baby out with the bathwater and that we could take a, a different approach to do this. We could take a different approach to do this, but it's, it's spending taxpayers' money to do that, and I'm not willing to do that. We're, we're going to spend that money as, as part of the master plan anyways. We should do this at that time. So.
Robert, would you want to speak to that master plan process or when it begins and, or when, when you anticipated me at the beginning?
So, and Paul, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as I'm now just jumping into the, the role that Tim has left, and I'm starting to come up to speed on, on the CIP and where things stand. I believe the master plan is scheduled for twenty twenty-five. If that's accurate, you know, we'd be looking at doing probably an RFP or something sometime along the lines next year to find a consultant for that. And master plan process itself would anticipate maybe one to two years to get through, depending on how the process goes.
Okay, because I was gonna.
Twenty-four, twenty-five is, is in, it's in the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe.
Okay.
To start the master plan, but there is the RFP process. There's vetting it. Robert's right. Probably we won't, we're not gonna really see anybody prior to twenty-five to really get going on this. Then there's the interviews and takes a while. I think the last one started in, I was acting, so two thousand and eleven? And we didn't see a final until thirteen.
Yeah.
So we, this is old news now, but we kind of dropped the ball. We didn't get it started. You know, we kind of should have.
No, no, it's on its schedule. This is, this is on the schedule. The planning, the, the master plan is on schedule.
Okay.
For, for when it was, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. In that timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah, the point being the document itself had its ten year validity shelf life period. So I think that's, yeah, so now we're starting.
Okay, when it begins, yeah. All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, seconded by Andy, to move it to a second reading. Will that be at our next meeting, Paul?
We'll try our hardest to get it on the twenty-eighth. We should have enough time to get in the paper for the twentieth. So we have the seven clear days. So I'll talk to, get it in tomorrow. Try to get it in tomorrow.
Okay.
It should be. I just don't know what the papers are doing now for cutoff dates for public hearings.
Yeah.
For when?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty, okay, twenty. I thought you said twentieth.
I have to be, it has to be in the paper by the twentieth.
Oh, okay.
For my seven clear days, which means I have three, you know, basically probably tomorrow to get it in. So it can get in for Wednesday, but we'll get in the paper. We'll do what we can do to get it in.
Thank you.
There's time, yep. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Five zero zero. With Nancy had recused herself. All right.
Thanks, Robert.
Item number five under new business, council to authorize is being asked to authorize the request for withdrawal of funds from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund and to be designated for the emergency expansion joint repair of Amherst Road Bridge totaling one hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred seventy dollars.
It's so nice that we have a deputy director that Dawn can say, Leo, you live in, you live in town. Would you mind doing this for me? So Leo's here tonight. No, Dawn, Dawn had an, Dawn had an emergency she had to attend to tonight. So she asked Leo to come in and, and speak on her behalf for this. So Leo is, sorry about that. It's fully versed in, you know.
Well, the good news is I don't have a forty-two slide presentation. So we're just gonna look at the photo of the expansion joint. Last winter, a plow hit the expansion joint. You'll see that it's got two strips of metal that it goes across the road. And a plow just caught the edge of it and damaged it. I believe Dawn had sent out drawings to the town council.
Yep.
Letter. That this, to simply explain what the expansion joint does is it allows the bridge to expand with temperature differences. And it seals the roadway. And so the expansion joint's still doing what it's supposed to do. It allows the bridge to expand and contract. But the seal is damaged now. And the important part of this is water is getting down between the expansion joint. And right below this is where the bridge deck and the bridge beams land. So if this continues, if we let this go, what'll happen is the bridge beams will start to corrode. The bridge deck will start to corrode. And unfortunately, the cost to fix the bridge will expand greatly. So.
There is a membrane. I know people, oh, two pieces of metal, it's hundred fifty. There is a membrane that goes on top of the bridge deck that helps keep the bridge deck from corroding as well. Because when you put salt on cement, we all know it corrodes the cement. So there's a membrane. And what happens is the membrane comes up, you put these expansion joints on and everything gets off into place. What they'll be doing is they will be reconstructing part of that membrane on that deck as well as replacing the whole expansion joint. It's supposed to take two to three weeks to complete this project. That's what Dawn at most. And we have already talked with Amherst and the police department and the fire department and the buses, the buses and the school to say that if this project gets approved, we're trying to do it before this plowing season.
In the memo, it says four to five weeks. I don't know if that was a misstatement there or.
It was truncated a little bit more.
It was.
Well, you're trying to get these guys in and out. And then we're using a reputable person who does a lot of these bridge work, does a lot of bridge work. R M Piper is the guy. We went out to bid. He was the one who won the bid.
The only one who, because I was, well, frankly, I don't know the business, but I was shocked at a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
That, that was actually lower than what our consultant told us was gonna cost, proof. Yeah. Yeah, so.
And it's a fairly evolved process, but what R M Piper's gonna be doing is they're gonna remove the expansion joint from where it is now, which is right at the abutment and bridge deck where those two meet. And they're gonna bring it back into the abutment a little bit. That way, if the seal ever fails again, what'll happen is that water will just simply run off underneath the bridge. It won't have any effect to the bridge structure. So.
It's actually improving.
It is, yep.
So this is up, this is on the, the leading edge. It's only the one side is gonna be repaired that appears to be on the left of this picture.
Yeah, that's only on one side of the bridge.
And that's up against the, the land mass is what you're telling me.
Yeah.
Okay. Barbara.
Just curious, is there anything that the plow drivers can do so that we don't have problems on other bridges? Like, I mean, they got a plow, so how do they miss these things?
They do, and this is a unique bridge expansion joint with those metal edges. A lot of them don't have that, or a lot of them have the
They're flatter.
A flatter or inset surface.
So this was just a design failure that the plow happened to hit up?
Yeah, yeah. This is an older design. Actually, the bridge is an older bridge, but it's in very good condition otherwise. So that's the other reason why we really want to jump on it is because it's in great condition. We don't want to have any deterioration.
No, very good. All right. Any further questions, comments? The pleasure of the council is.
Okay, make a motion.
Barbara.
And I move to, for the town council to authorize the withdrawal of funds from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund and to be designated for the emergency expansion joint repair totaling one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And that the town manager be empowered to sign all appropriate documents.
Next. Motion by Barbara, seconded by Tom Koenig.
You would make her proud.
No, she didn't say and/or.
Did she have to mention the name of the bridge? Or is that, is that understood because of the? There's no further discussion? All the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Leo.
She'll be happy. All right, minutes, August seventeenth, minutes, two thousand twenty-three. All good?
I didn't have any problem with it.
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
And I'll.
Move to approve the minutes of August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, the second by Barbara.
As written.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Is that six zero zero, Barbara? Was that it?
Yes.
Six zero zero. I did, sorry. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? Seeing none? Comments from the council? Wow.
Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. All those, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstain? Six zero zero. Thank you very much, everybody.